To the South St George constituency. Welcome to Woban. We call her the Queen from the South. Still is. Still is, sisters and brothers. And tonight, focus of tonight's proceedings will be a feature presentation from the honourable, still honourable, parliamentary representative for this constituency, St George's South. But as we begin, allow me to ask Father Harris to invoke presence of the Almighty.
Brothers and sisters, good night. I want us to first listen to God's word, the word of God, and which we can use as we basically reflect and listen this evening. I'm sharing with you a word of God which I've been wrestling with since Saturday morning. Last week wasn't a good week for me. And I was going through a lot, a lot of sufferings and so on. And I was on a retreat this weekend and a young lady chooses as the morning prayer or reflection. And it is what has basically kept me going this week. And I want to share it with you tonight. It's really about tending the flock of God and dealing with sufferings and hardships. Now, reading from 1 Peter, chapter 5. "Now, as an elder myself and a witness of the sufferings of Christ, as well as one who shares in the glory of the revealed, I exalt elders among you to tend the flock of God that is in your charge, exercising the oversight, not under compulsion, but willingly, as God would have you do it, and not for sordid gain, but eagerly. Do not lord it over those in your charge, but be examples to the flock. And when the chief shepherd appears, he will win the crown; you will win the crown of glory that will never fades away. In the same way, you are younger; must accept the authority of the elders; and all of you must clothe yourselves with humility in your dealings with one another; for God opposes the proud but gives grace to the humble. Humble yourselves therefore, under the mighty hand of God, so that he may exalt you in due time. Cast all your anxieties on him, because he cares for you. Discipline yourselves; keep alert. Like a roaring lion, your adversary, the devil, prowls round, looking for someone to devour; resisting, steadfast in your faith; for you know that your brothers and sisters in all the world are undergoing the same kinds of suffering. And after you have suffered for a while, the Lord, the God of all grace, who has called you to this eternal glory in Christ, will himself restore and strengthen and establish you; to him be the power forever and ever." Amen. Let us pray. Lord God, we ask that you come now and be in our midst, you who guide and govern everything with order and love. We ask that you look upon this gathering, fill us with the spirit of your wisdom, give us the spirit and the gift of discernment and openness. May we always act in accordance with your will and that our decisions for peace and well-being be according to your greater good and glory. Send your spirit, Lord, to guide and strengthen us, that we may serve your people for an example of Jesus Christ, your Son, in whose name we pray and offer the prayer he taught us. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name; thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us; and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, the power and the glory, forever and ever." Amen.
Keep standing, keep standing. I want you to to join with me as we sing the national anthem. So let us be God-first country after. So I want you to stand with me and join the national anthem. After the count of three, I wouldn't want to lead off on a wrong key or wrong note. So you have to bear with me. One, two, three. Grenada! And the Father, we pledge ourselves to thee, exiles and immunities, to reach our destiny; ever conscious of God, being proud of our heritage; may we with faith and courage, aspire, build, advance; as one people, one family; God bless our nation. Thank you so much. Keep standing, keep standing. We just want to ask to do a minute silence. Over the last couple of months, year, we had a challenging time. Glennis' husband would have loved to be here. He's not here with us. A minute's silence for Comrade Terry. Thank you so much. Allow me to once again welcome in a very special way each and every one of you who are here this evening to this town hall meeting. And allow me to first of all introduce to you the members on the head table. I see from on my far left the honourable parliamentary representative for St Patrick's West, Joseph Gilbert. He is with us. And he's wearing a very colourful shirt tonight. Looking very smart, my brother. Right next to him is a gentleman who I have the utmost respect and the highest regard for. A gentleman when the National Democratic Congress was in the doldrums, was in the gutter. The man who put the NDC on his shoulder and bear that cross when no one would. When those who go on radio and television today to talk about who should form party and who should do this and who should do that. Jerome Joseph, brothers and sisters. He bared the brunt of the National Democratic Congress. He is the godfather of the NDC, the grandfather of the NDC, the father of the NDC. Sisters and brothers. And Comrade Jerome, you are a shining light in the politics of this country. And where you trod, not even lion and tiger could go there. My brother, it is the greatest of greetings and the sweetest of love that we welcome you here this evening. And I do want to the other person on the podium, on the head table, is the cutest in all of us. Very good-looking. Not only once, but twice, she has defeated all those who have come up against her in the South St George constituency. And sisters and brothers, she will defeat them again. That is the message tonight. She will defeat them again, sisters and brothers. On that journey that she embarked on ten years ago, it was to transform the South St George constituency. On that journey that she embarked ten years ago, sisters and brothers, it was to transform this beloved country. That journey is not yet over. And so she has to journey again. And it is with a great sense of emotion and pride and love and joy that all of her children, all of her children is sitting on the front row. And I want them to stand. Stand. And turn around. Those, thank you so much. You know, so much time when you're in politics, so much time when you're in politics. If you read the papers day after day, week after week, month after month, year after year for the last four years, they have said and they have written so many things about the honourable Glennis Roberts. Sometimes I wonder if the authors of those stories do not have any children of their own. It is not an easy thing, sisters and brothers, when you are in politics. It is bad enough for them to attack you relentlessly and falsely, week after week, and month after month. But sisters and brothers, you in politics and you have put yourself out in politics and you reasonably expect to be attacked, but not your children, not your parents, not your spouse, not your family, sisters and brothers. And that attack has gone on relentlessly. And those who could put a stop and put an end to it, they add fuel to it, sisters and brothers. They add fuel to it. And sisters and brothers, as I say to them, I grew up with old people and I know who laughs last laugh, laugh the best laugh. Who laugh last laugh the best laugh. And when the bell tolls and we ring the bell, we go know who is man and who is woman. Some of them, they hide behind all kind of false name and call themselves all kind of name. If you is man, come and let me know who you are. Come and challenge, put up your name, show your face. You wanna play assassin? Are you afraid people see you? Tonight, sisters and brothers, is a very important night in the annals of the political history of this country. Since 2008, the National Democratic Congress party formed the government after thirteen years of new national party rule in this country. Well, I wish you would only say that louder. But sisters and brothers and comrades, you do not need me to remind you of the tomahawks and the challenges that the government have experienced, that the party have experienced over the last four years. When you meet party comrades and you meet persons who have supported the NDC and they express their sadness and disappointment, you, as one who put yourself out in the front line, it brings tears to your eyes because you're doubly disappointed and you're doubly saddened. But sisters and brothers, the struggle to transform our country, the struggle to develop our country remains ours. And we cannot leave it up to anyone else. We must take responsibility for the development of our country or else our children will never forgive us for that. And that is why the motivation is there to continue to work, to continue to develop our country. And whatever vehicle that is used, whatever medium that is used, this is a call for every Grenadian across the tri-ileland state of Grenada, Caracu and Peti-Matnik. Those who are in New York, those who are in London, we live on the net tonight. Those in Trinidad, those in Germany, those in England, wherever you are, this is a call to arms. This is a time, sisters and brothers, when we need to rally around our country. Our country needs us now more than ever. Our country needs us now more than ever, sisters and brothers. And I see the President General, the distinguished fighter for workers' rights in this country. The honourable Chester Humphrey has just joined us. Good night, Ches. So sisters and brothers, this evening's meeting is not the end of anything. It is the beginning of great things to come. It is the beginning of great things to come, sisters and brothers. And as we gather here this evening to share with you on this political platform, I know I saw him all year round, but he's in the middle of the crowd. The honourable parliamentary representative for St George's South, Mr Carlwood, please stand. You try to hide from me. Thank you, sir. Your presence is welcome. Are there any more parliamentary representatives here? Ah? I hear him at Minister Church, Minister Church. I still call him Minister Church. And on behalf of this gathering, allow me to extend condolences to Minister Church. Now he lost his dad a couple of weeks ago. These days, young, old, everybody fall down. Sometimes I wonder what we fight it for. I don't know why we have behaved ourselves. So sisters and brothers, tonight allow me to introduce the first speaker. And as I said before, in my remarks in introducing him, stalwart does not describe his contribution to the NDC. Godfather does not describe his contribution to the NDC. He does not only speak or know the NDC when the NDC is in government, like some of us. But he knows the NDC when the NDC, nobody following the NDC, he's there. And he was there. He was there in the lowest moment of the NDC, he was in the highest moment of the NDC. And if there is anybody, if there is anyone who can speak about the NDC, it is none other than Brother Jerome Joseph. I invite Brother Jerome Joseph to share with us on the podium.
Thank you very much, Brother Chair, Brother Joe Gilbert, Sister Glennis Roberts. And Glennis has in fact really become a true sister of mine over the last ten years. Brother Ches, Father Harris. Brothers and sisters all, members of the press. First, let me apologize for my attire. It's not my intention to outshine Ali or Glennis or Joe. I just happen to have come from funeral. So that's in fact my funeral gown. Ten years ago, brothers and sisters, when Peter's general secretary of the NDC was given the task to find someone to represent this constituency in the upcoming election. As we move about the various villages throughout the constituency, one name was strongly recommended in all the villages that we went to. And that name was the name of Glennis Roberts. Glennis at the time was someone comfortable sitting in her desk job. Glennis at the time had no intention of becoming involved in politics and had no political experience whatsoever. But because of the strong recommendation we were getting from the various villages, we thought Glennis was the person we would recommend to the party. And today we have had no regrets. And I believe you who had made the recommendations to us to have Glennis selected as the person to represent you in parliament certainly have no regrets. I believe Glennis has represented you well. And when I say you, I mean members of the constituency. Certainly she has represented Grenada well in various capacities, in the various ministries she was asked to serve. She represented us well. And I believe because of the kind of representation Glennis has given you over the last nine years, you would certainly want the honourable Glennis Roberts to continue representing you in parliament. Glennis has given us the indication that irrespective of what she would continue in politics and she would want the opportunity to continue to give you the kind of representation that she has given you over the last nine years. And as I said, I believe you would certainly give her this opportunity. For myself, I would want to associate with Glennis's new approach or her new dispensation as it were, as she journey in her political course in the future. Glennis has indicated, and the opportunity tonight is hers, Glennis has indicated that she no longer wish to serve in the present cabinet, but she would continue to be in politics. And I would be prepared to be there on Glennis's side as I have been with her over the last ten years. Persons in the South would know that even though I have been national campaign manager, the South has had a very special place in my contribution to national politics. I have always worked very closely with the people in South St George. And I have pledged I would continue to assist in South St George to ensure that whenever elections are called and whenever Glennis put her name up in the upcoming election, I would be there to give Glennis the support. So once again, I wish to associate myself with Glennis as she chart her new political course. Glennis, you can count on me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brother Jerome Joseph. At this time, we want to acknowledge the departure of Father Harris. He has to leave now. Thank you so much. Sisters and brothers, I see that this evening we have solidarity from other constituencies, persons who are here to support the honourable Glennis Roberts. I see the town of St George well represented. Rule call. I see St Patrick's East. I see St Patrick's West. I see St George's Southeast. I see St George's Northeast. It looks as though we have everybody here. Trinidad and Tobago and all. St David's, St David's here. Well, you could take all the best picture from St John's. So sisters and brothers, thank you for your support and your camaraderie and your solidarity to the honourable Glennis Roberts tonight. Comrades, this challenge that we have to continue to develop our country, to continue to advance economic programs for the employment of our Grenadian people, and that, sisters and brothers, is one of the rallying cry all across the country. The cry of jobs, jobs, jobs. And I know, sisters and brothers, that in Glennis Roberts' capacity in the Ministry of Labour, she has sought to seek opportunities for young persons to be employed in Grenada, on the fields of Canada, on the cruise ships and other areas of employment. Our economy, sisters and brothers, it is not a laughing matter. It is not a joking matter when our government cannot pay public servants on time. The repercussions of that, of course, with public servants and the mortgages at the end of August is not no ordinary time. When thousands of students have to go back to school, sisters and brothers, uniform and transportation and all these different needs. These are indeed testing times. We do not know what the end of this month will bring, but we pray to God that things will work out just fine and that everything will go as clockwork and we can resume service as normal. That is a very important, sisters and brothers, time in the economic history of our country. And we cannot, as patriots, trivialize it. So to the Minister of Finance, I take issue with you when you say to the Grenadian people that is not our business where you get the money from. Transparency in government means you have to account to the Grenadian people. I champion transparency and I will not witness transparency become intransparent, sisters and brothers. Accountability cannot become unaccountable, sisters and brothers. Good governance cannot be come broke poor governance, sisters and brothers. Mister Minister of Finance, you have to account to the Grenadian people. Mister Prime Minister, you have to open up the parliament. Open up the parliament. Open up the parliament, sisters and brothers. You have to open up the parliament. You have to account to the Grenadian people. Don't go on radio and give us a story about the ECB. I was in government in December. I never knew we had to get this five, we got this five million dollars from a facility in the ECB that St Vincent had to give us the good dresses. You have to account to the people. You have to account to your cabinet colleagues. This governance is not a hush-hush thing and a shush-shush thing. It is not the business of a few privileged ones, sisters and brothers. The business of the governance of this country is for 100,000 of us. It's for all of us in the diaspora. It's for all of us in St Patrick's East. All of us in St John's, in St David's. It's for all of us in St Patrick's East, all of us in St John's, in St David's, in Pitymatik. Sisters and brothers, Mister Buck, you're out of place! You're out of place! Sisters and brothers, you're out of place and I will deal with you, brother. We breaking, brother, on that one. You have to account to the Grenadian people. Mister Prime Minister, you have to ensure that the Minister of Finance account to the Grenadian people. That is a responsibility, sisters and brothers. We can accuse the NMP of doing hush hush thing and when we in government we doing hush hush thing. I would not stand for that, sisters and brothers. The playing field of politics must be equal. The measuring stick for the NMP must be the same measuring stick for the NDC, sisters and brothers. We must use the same measuring sticks, sisters and brothers. We must be judged by one standard, sisters and brothers. Only then, only then, sisters and brothers, we can hold our head high. You have to account to the Grenadian people, my brother. You have to do it. Where you get money is not your business. The Ministry of Finance is not your own palace. If you are king leaving your palace in West Alpo, you're the swimming pool, bro. I have no problem with that. But once you enter public life and you man the finances of this country, you accountable to me as a citizen, sisters and brothers. And you accountable to all the man and the lands, to all the men, fishermen, women, to all the sailors from Karaku, to all the farmers in Borshgroth, sisters and brothers. Don't come and tell us you are secret where you get money from. When we say kid get money in briefcase, you all over tongue say where kid get money, where kid get? Where you get money now? You have to account to the people. Serious matter. Transparency cannot be intransparent. Accountability cannot be unaccountable for and good governance can be bad governance. So, this is serious business tonight and I warming up. Warming up. Before I come here, I look at you saying bold run and I feel like I beat you same bold in next Olympics. Sisters and brothers, at this point in time, I think now is a good time for me to introduce a good comrade and friend. A man, sisters and brothers, who have made his life commitment to work and to represent the working class people of this country. With regards to anything you think about him, sisters and brothers, Chester Humphrey, and I may repeat Chester Arlington Humphrey, is an icon and is a stalwart for the working class people of this country. Regardless of what you think, sisters and brothers, he is always on the side of the workers. Whether he make a sale, whether they arrest him, the struggle for the working people in this country, sisters and brothers. When the history of this country is written, Chester Humphrey will be on top of the page. Sisters and brothers, allow me to introduce my comrade and friend, Senator Chester Humphrey.
Comrade Chairman, other members on the head table. Well, I can't say comrade minister, but I would say comrade Glenys, the Honourable Glenys Roberts. And comrades, to your honour and to your glory, I would ask you to give this lady from your constituency a lusty round of applause. Comrades, when we begun this journey, we begun this journey in order to do a number of things. Essentially, it was a journey of change. Simply because when we begun this journey, many things were not going right. When we begun this journey, we begun this journey on a platform of Grenadian patriotism. We begun this journey without class or without colour or without creed. We begun this journey with a singular honesty and a mission to create a better life for the people, the working people of this country. That is how we begun this journey. When Glenys entered the political free, it was with that honesty. And I want you to recall, when this lady entered the political free, one of the consequences, and I want you tonight to be reflective. I want you tonight to think and remember because there are many Johnny comes lately. There are many of those who the mountain has been hacked, the trees have been cut, the pickaxe have leveled the road and they believe they have a easy time to walk. So they are now coming out of the blue. And I hearing all kind of names. I hearing names of those who live in Lancelpine. I hear the names of those who live in some external places. I even hear that is one who writes every week in the newspaper but afraid to use his name. I don't know if he's Eddie Frederick, but I hear Eddie Frederick is one of those who might be coming. I want you to reflect when we begun this journey. When we begun this journey, this lady, after twenty something years of working with the European Union, I want you to recall that, who had a secure job, who was working in a secure place, who had a very good job, was forced to give up her job once she announced that she was going to begin this journey on your behalf. I want you to recall that. It is very important. Because I know that many working people in this area feel let down. Tonight, when we assemble here, we assembled with broken hearts. Earlier on the news, I saw a comrade of mine celebrating. And he was celebrating on the news, according to him, that they get out Peter David and they get out Glenys and others. And it was a celebration. And I couldn't understand whether or not that individual had made a step into the culture of the Hindus. Who, from my understanding of the culture, they use the point of death as a celebration because essentially where the NDC is now is right back to where we resurrected when it came from. So I could not understand what this celebration was all about. Now, these are no doubt difficult economic times. When we begun this journey, we begun the journey to improve the lives of ordinary working people. And that's why I came on board. I came on board. I didn't hide. I didn't have to write my name as Stonecrusher, although I'm really Eddie Frederick. I came out in the open. And I said that I am joining this journey. And I went on the political platform. Because I felt that with this momentum of change, it was in the circumstances the best thing for the working people and for the workers that I represent. So I came on board with the journey. Let us be clear. I was not looking for a work. I didn't end up in the Ministry of Finance as a de facto Minister of Finance. I didn't end up in tourism, running the tourist board. I didn't end up as an advisor to the Prime Minister drawing a big salary. And when I get an opportunity, I went to get a even bigger salary and end up working for 7,000 US dollars as an advisor to the Prime Minister. I had the job that I always had and as Talun knows, because Talun has been a proud member of the Technical and Allied Workers Union, I have the same job that I have always had. And it is a job I like. And some people ask me, Chester, why you like this job so? I say, because let me tell you something. Representing workers for me, right, is even better than good sex. For me. In other words, that is what I cut out to do. So when I joined Glenys and others on this journey, I didn't do like some of the advisors who had self-interests. Who had self-interests. Now, we are no doubt in difficult economic times. There is no doubt about that. But when I begun this journey and in 2003, where the party had no persons in the parliament, none. And within eighteen months, when those who they now call communists, I mean, could you imagine? Could you imagine that they have become so guile, so unprincipled? And you know, they have been attacking their own more than they have been attacking the opposition? When Eddie and/or Stonecrusher writes in the newspaper every week religiously and denigrates an ordinary working woman, call her frock lady, right? And all kind of denigrating words. Now, these are the people, it is my understanding, that one of the beef with Eddie Frederick is he say that he went to Peter to become ambassador to China. And he wanted to top that up, to also become a knight. So he requested from Peter to arrange a knighthood for him so he could become a sir. And he goes off to China to be ambassador. Well, I don't know which world Frederick live in. But we are living in the real world and my understanding is that is his beef with Peter David, to the extent, to the extent. And you see, I have to tell you this, you see? I have to tell you this because we have to understand what's happening. We have to understand what's happening. Because the dream of thousands of Grenadian working people have been shattered. The hope, not just of you as party supporters, have been shattered. Because those of us who are out in the vineyards working day and night. And notice when Eddie gives now his attributes and contributes of those who helped to put the NDC in office, he had dropped my name. But I have never worked for reward. I work because of an ideological commitment to ordinary working people. And I have said that I will give my life for that. So I don't want to be an ambassador, neither do I want to be Sir Humphrey. In fact, I was called sometime this year and told that he wanted to give me an award. And I said, I would not accept an award. Particularly if that award comes from the Queen. So I would not accept an award because I do what I do because that's how my genes are programmed. I no look for no special award. But I want you to focus on the efforts that has been made by your representative. Now, I know that we are a bit dissatisfied that much has not happened. But you can't judge her individually. The government itself hasn't done much. The government itself has not done much. And whatever little that has been done, you have to give significant praise to her. Let me tell you something. Had it not been for Glenys Roberts, security guards would never have gotten that increase that they got. In fact, when Glenys fought in the cabinet and got that increase, NAS overturned it. NAS overturned it. And there had to be more fighting in the cabinet to bring it forward. Now, they saying that we in a world crisis, we know that, there's no doubt about that. But the same world crisis that we are in, St Vincent is in that world crisis, but Ralph is able to lend us 10 million dollars. The same world crisis that we are in and that the advisors are talking about. Because let me tell you something, you know, they don't like Ralph, you know? No, they don't like Ralph. They say a lot of negative things about Ralph and I know them. I know them. But the same economic crisis that we are in, Ralph is building an international airport. Not only did Ralph build, not only has Ralph built an international airport, in fact, he has built two. Because if you flying into the Grenadines now, if you flying into Canaan, there is a jet international airport in Canaan. So Ralph, even this economic crisis, not only is he able to lend Grenada money, he has, at the end of this year or early next year or mid-year, he would have built two international airports. Two international airports. All right, let me go to a place waiting a ganja. Let me go to a place because I don't know government collect taxes from ganja. I don't know that. What I do know is Ralph is building this international airport with international assistance. He get money from Venezuela, he get assistance from Cuba, he get money even from Iran. He gets money from the Scandinavian countries. He's just gotten a grant from Italy. In other words, he's following the same example that we followed. Because I tell you something, St Vincent is further from the source of gas than Grenada. Yet gas prices and cooking gas prices are cheaper in St Vincent. And we in the same economy. As a matter of fact, Grenada's economy is much more diversified. But let me go to a place where they in a ganja. Right now, as I speak to you, yes, we in the same difficult economic circumstance. But if you land on the airport in Antigua, as I land almost every week, you will see a massive new international terminal being built. And it is being built with Chinese money and assistance. So I'm saying a number of things could have been done. Let's take CCC. Since this government has came in office, the vast majority of CCC workers have been unemployed. And that is a project that could implement, or could employ over 1,000 persons. I went to the government, I went to the Prime Minister twice and begged him. I say, sir, these are hard economic times coming. Sit down with the CCC and negotiate. And you know what is worse? I have credible information in my possession that at the end of the day, although they kicked out CCC, create prolonged unemployment for many workers. As I understand it, CCC is the one that has been recommended by the engineering, um, um, project management firm to do the job. So they right back to where they started. And had they been not stupidly let, you see, there some fellows are so bright that quite often they get stupid. And I believe that Mister Burke is in that category. He ain't telling you where the money coming from, but my understanding is that a lot of that money is to come from of that money is to come from the workers' business, and that is the National Insurance Scheme. So, thanks to the National Insurance Scheme, public workers got paid last month. And maybe, thanks to the National Insurance Scheme, you might get paid this month. So I'm saying, it is not magic. It is not magic. But I am here to lend my support to an individual who has touched my heart. This lady has remained in the most painful time of her life. Her husband didn't die with a sudden heart attack. He died from cancer, and she looked at him died. She had to attend to him, together with her children, while at the same time representing you. And I want you to give consideration to that sacrifice, and to return this lady, whenever the election is called, back to the Parliament, because she's a genuine son and daughter of the soil, the Honorable Glennis Roberts, my comrade.
Thank you very much, Comrade Chester Humphrey, on your kind words, and for sharing with us some of the information that you shared with us. In a period or in an area where it seems as though persons do not want to share information with the Grenadian people anymore, we thank you, Senator Humphrey, for sharing with us. In a period or an area where the hacking of emails, the tapping of telephones of private citizens are glorified, hacking of emails, tapping of telephones are glorified, thank you, Senator Humphrey, for sharing information with us. Sisters and brothers, as Senator Humphrey said, these are tough economic times, there is no question about that. You look at the news, and no one could question that. But sisters and brothers, as leaders, we have to continue to struggle on, and we have to continue to deliver for our people. And this journey that the Honorable Glennis Roberts has been on, and Senator Humphrey spoke to it, was not an easy journey. She had her own personal challenges for the better part of two years, for the better part of half of the time that she was a member of Cabinet. She was given different ministerial portfolios, and it's no fault of ours that she was moved left, right, or centre. And anywhere she went, she worked hard at it, as she has exemplified herself. And she continued to carry on. Attacks in the press, written press, attacks in the press, television, and radio, and she stayed the course. It is my respectful view that the Honorable Glennis Roberts have some tough genetic makeup, like ladies in politics like Margaret Thatcher, like ladies in politics like Eugenia Charles of Dominica. She's one tough lady, sisters and brothers. At times, when the men had, men put down their heads, and their heads, and they look demotivated, and they look a bit depressed, Glennis was the one to cheer them up. Sisters and brothers, I am extremely proud to be on the same political platform as the Honorable Glennis Roberts. I feel extremely proud, sisters and brothers. She has left the government of Grenada with no stain to her name, sisters and brothers. She has left the government of Grenada with all her integrity and all her dignity intact, sisters and brothers. I say to you tonight, Glennis, you have lived to fight another day. So sisters and brothers, sometimes I call her the tigress of the NDC. And when I get bad, I say you the lioness. But in all that, sisters and brothers, she continues to remain a shining light in the politics of this country. Look at the political history of this country, sisters and brothers. And she's where the air is rare, in terms of women in politics, sisters and brothers. Tonight must be a celebration of a contribution of women in politics, sisters and brothers. We must give it up, we must pick up the sisters that are in politics, sisters and brothers. Because not only do they have the constituencies to look after, but they have their families, they continue to be head of the household, they have their children, sisters and brothers, and their husbands to look after. And I don't know how Grenadian man lazy. You have to cook, wash, all kind of thing for them. I not so, you know? But sisters and brothers, for women in our culture to make the sacrifice to anti-politics, we have to raise our caps to them. Because they are giving up and sacrificing a lot. And I know, sisters and brothers, that when Glennis' husband was ill, sometimes she would fight, fight to go into the office, to sign documents and to supervise our ministry, and she had to go back to tend to him, after the fact that she didn't sleep for the entire night. And I say, comrade sister, you losing weight. She say I go survive. Today I was going around the country, and she tell me bring to mango for her. Glennis ain't a mango. But sisters and brothers, we want to celebrate the contribution of women in politics tonight. And I believe that we need more women in politics, and we need more women like Glennis Roberts in politics, sisters and brothers. You know, there are women in politics today who I never ever saw when NDC was in opposition. They never want to struggle. Some people just want the icing and the cake, and want everything nice. But Glennis Roberts, when history is written about her contribution in politics, it will be said that she entered the NDC when NDC had no seat in the Parliament of this country, sisters and brothers. And it is in that vein that we must look at the contribution of the Honorable Glennis Roberts. Glennis, I think you hear your name called enough time for the night, and I think it is time for you to come and do your own speaking and your own talking. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to introduce to the podium none other than the Parliamentary Representative for the South of St. George, the Honorable Glennis Roberts.
Thank you very much, Senator Chester Humphrey, Comrade Ali Gill, as well as Comrade Joseph Gilbert, and my political father, Mr. Jerome Joseph. To my, to my wonderful family, I believe in family, to all my friends, to the media, those who support and who do not support. My friends, tonight is a time to renew our faith, not wallow in self-doubt and pity. Tonight is a time to rekindle love and hope, not to promote division and bitterness. And so I am here tonight, by the grace of God, and by the power of the love you have shown me through the years, as Parliamentary Representative for St. George's South. I come back to you tonight, not despondent, but determined, not wasting, but willing. This has been a difficult year for me personally, and an even more difficult one for the nation. But as believers, we know that when times are rough, we wrap ourselves around faith. Romans 12:12 says, rejoice in hope, be patient in tribulation, be constant in prayer. It is that unbending faith that kept my family together through the most difficult of times this year. On May 5th, as you know, I lost my husband, my best friend, my children, who are all here tonight, lost their dad. We carry on each day with the love that he had blessed us with while here on earth. And as much as his passing has torn our hearts, his memory keeps us together. And so my public life must be an unending tribute to his private love. He was the only person I know loved me. It is that love that covers me on this political march forward. We must never underestimate the power of both love and faith, both in our individual lives and in our communities. So for people who do not know us well, wondering what has brought us this far, what has kept us going, and why we won't give up now, we tell you, it is based on our faith. Yes, the attacks have been coming fast and furious, and from quarters you'd least expect. But we must stand firm and move forward with dignity. We must not yield to the temptation to surrender. Yes, we may retreat, and we may restrategize, but we must never give up. As it is said in 2 Corinthians, so we do not lose heart, though our alter self is wasting away, our inner self is being renewed day by day. And so I come here tonight, not only to report on my stewardship, but through a sense of the need for renewal. My blessings come from the Lord, and my political validation comes from you. As you're aware, I came to frontline politics almost ten years ago. Until that time, I'd never really considered any involvement in frontline politics. I was satisfied to serve my God and my country in my little corner. And I was contented with that. But people came calling, and I had to answer. In life, sometimes, the river leads you down a different stream, and you sometimes have to answer to a higher calling. But when I came into politics, before I made the commitment to the wider community, I made a commitment to my God, my family, and myself. That commitment was what I am walking with through the door with my dignity. That commitment was that I am walking through this door with all my dignity, and I will never lose any of it. Politics is not the stage to compromise dignity, but it's to showcase it. And it is this I hold true to, and it is with this dignity that I am standing here tonight. In approaching service to the community, my political philosophy was based on a simple biblical philosophy, and that is, the least you do to your brother, you do unto me. When we came into office, our dream was to build community by lifting people up, not fighting each other down. And as a collective, we have not always been true to that dream. But still, we should not let that disappointment lead to despair. There are enough of us standing in all parties with conscience and commitment. The hard knocks of the last four years have made me better, not bitter. And so it must make all of us. I am going forward tonight, and I am determined to build on the many successes we have had, especially here in St. George's South. In the last four years, we have achieved a lot together. We have done over fifteen roads from Fuente, Grandance Valley, Woodlands, Montu and the Lines. We have built four houses, this constituency, for people who are in need, mind you, with donations from private people. We built a bus shed at Springs with the help of Lime, and have embarked on a 1.1 million dollar community centre project in Montu, with the help of the government of Venezuela. Only Uncle Gary, only Uncle Gary built a community centre in the south, so I'm following on his heels. We have also lighted the Woban playing field with assistance from Grenlek, and the Coen family on Calavini Island, for which we are eternally grateful. In our attempts to empower people, we have helped inspire the formation of a number of community groups, with one in Woban with about twenty members, the most vibrant among all. We've also taken a number of environmental projects, including Woodlands, Pointe Celine, Grandance, and Montu, you know I like to plant trees. We have assisted hundreds of people directly through our annual Christmas programme, the Mother's Day programme, and the back-to-school programme, as well as our Christmas hampers, and monthly hampers. The complete list of our achievement is included in a brochure which I have handed out earlier, not at this meeting. But there is more to be done, and through the grace of God and your support, we will see them through. One of the major projects we have in the pipeline is the completion of the Calavini Community Centre. The drawings are already in, and that should be finalized soon, but again, fiscal is tight. The upgrade of the Springs playing field, including the allocation for the building for the Pan House, is also very high on that list, but again, the same story. Real action on that project, I hope, will start within some months. We have started negotiating for the lighting of the Lime's playing field, and Grenlek has so agreed to, but in early 2013. Crucially going forward is the need to provide more people with opportunities, so that they can lift themselves out of poverty. We will continue to lobby for more training opportunities and small business assistance. To bring benefits to the south, we have to continue to gather on this road we have started. But how do we ensure more progress going forward? How can we ensure that we do not miss as many opportunities as we have missed these past four years? It is my humble view, and considered view, that the current political construct has not worked as well at all, especially for the people who are most in need of a hand-up. There is no doubt that we need a new political construct, one that is based on love, not ridicule. One, one that's based on commitment to people, not cunning to the politics. It is my determination with your support to find a better way. I have been around the constituency, and I'm clear that the people want a better result, and they want a different way. And so today, after weeks of consultation, and after months of urging by you, the supporters, and with the understanding of my parliamentary colleagues, I handed in my resignation from the Cabinet of Grenada to the Governor General. I explained that I was grateful to have served, and I left with all my love and all my respect to all parties intact. I never questioned the Prime Minister's character, only his leadership choices. And I just genuinely wished for everybody, and for the whole of Grenada, it was different. it was different and it was better. When I ran in 2003 and then in 2008, I ran to be the Parliamentary Rep for the people of St. George's South. The only thing I was guaranteed was a win in the poll, was a seat in the parliament. Tonight, I remain a proud member of the Parliament of Grenada and will take my rightful place in the chambers when it is finally allowed to sit again. I truly hope that this is sooner rather than later, because there are some urgent economic and financial matters that need to be taken care of, so that people can be guaranteed salaries and benefits. It is high time that through the guidance of the parliament and the humility of leadership, we launch the foundation for the building of a viable economy. To govern by decree in a time of crisis is a mistake. We need the views and opinions of everybody, particularly those elected by people to represent them. Democracy, and I repeat, democracy cannot be an inconvenience. When a nation's future is at stake, patriots must be willing to put their own future at stake. That is what I did today. Don't ask me how I'm paying the bills. Now, without Cabinet's collective responsibility, I can turn on apologetically to the 100% responsibility of representing the people of St. George's South with aggressiveness and daring. Now, my first and only commitment is to you right here in the south. The contract with the people is one that I take seriously and one I hope to renew with you in the next general election within the next nine months. There are many of our friends and our supporters who have a genuine concern about the potential of the current situation facing the nation to fall back into bad habits even by default. And we all have to guard against that. But the real spoilers can only be those who continue to ignore their supporters, administer over the properization of the people, and ignore the coalition on which the change movement should be solidly built. The dreams and aspirations of July 8, 2008 have not been undermined by those who stand up and ask questions about whether we are on the right track. They have been undermined by arrogance and contempt. The real spoiler threatens when we trade building bridges for building barriers, when instead of pinning hopes, we pin labels. But in our frustration, we must resist the temptation to grab back at the past. Our successes must not be judged by what has been achieved, but by what is possible. And so our country is at a crucial juncture. We are at a time and a place where we must not settle for excuses, but be inspired by example. We must build a future, not by blaming the past, but by seizing the opportunities of now. The nation faces some stark choices: going back, standing still, or moving forward. I am proud to declare myself among the coalition of the willing that is determined to move forward. And I invite all of you to join us so that we can work together, pray together, so that we will have a better destiny. Before I leave, I want to urge you to register, because that's the only way you'll be able to help us make that difference. I want to personally thank all the persons who would have rallied with us, our family, when we went through our most difficult times. It is not easy to be on the march and lose your partner. And as I stand here, I see Ms. Helen, Aunt Aunt Idrida, Mrs. Lee, and Sheila. And they all worked shifts in the night, even though Ms. Helen slept most of the time. But I always have to reflect on Terry's passing, because that was the time when I knew that there are more good people in the world than bad. Because as a family, we never wanted anything to eat. They stopped bringing it now. But we were grateful at the time. And I want to thank them from the bottom of my heart. And I also want to say to the people who do not support my ideals that I am one who believes that in democracy, we should be able to differ and work together. So if, yes, and my biggest regret in politics is seeing people that I know would have said a lovely hello to me, now look at me as if I'm a devil. I am not a devil, no? So I'm saying to people, we can differ on things, but let's be friends. The world, Grenada, is too small, and our lives are too short for that to happen. So let's, and you know, I would have resigned, and that is my decision. I also want to say that, you know, what's amazing is that for years, as Ali said, every week in the newspaper, "Brainless glorified secretary, fat, praying, she plain holy, frock lady", but none of all you in writing the newspaper and defend me, you know. But now, everybody here resigned today. I can't even get a rest. Glennis, I hear you resigned. Why? How? And I said to myself, you know, in politics, the final decision to go or to stay has to be mine. And I want people to respect that, because I do not want to leave politics without my integrity. I want to be able to respect persons, and we must respect people's decisions. And I know they've started saying all sorts of things, but I would not be answering. I will just be marching on to work for your betterment. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, the Honorable Glennis Roberts. Well said, well spoken. Can we hear it again for the Honorable? Thank you very much, brothers and sisters. And just a footnote, next week Wednesday, we then journey to St. Patrick's West. We'll be held by Brother Joseph Gilbert at the Alleykan School from 6:30 PM next Wednesday, where we're going to have another town hall meeting of this nature. I see the bollard from town has just arrived. The Honorable Peter David, welcome. Okay, sisters and brothers, what we are going to do now, we're going to entertain some questions for the next 10 or 15 minutes or thereabout. So you can stand. We have a microphone in the back. Keep it short, and we're going to go rapidly. It is now 10 minutes tonight. We look to wrap up by 9 o'clock. Is there anyone who wish to ask any question? Gentleman right in front, want to make a comment? Let us respect views and listen to one person speak.
Pleasant good night to everyone. Sister Glennis Roberts, it's not that I want to ask questions, but I think I'm quite happy that you make a decision to stand down, because, to be honest, it's not only you. There's a lot of foot soldiers, because they realize that the fight, they win the fight upstairs, they end up in the yard, and they start fighting, even the ordinary man who do not have a position within the party, let's say, and the executive or whatever. But I congratulate you, and one of the things I want you to know, people like yourself, as long as you decide to go forward and fight the next general elections, you have my support. I will have sleepless nights just to make sure that people like you represent us again. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Just good evening. Good evening, Mr. Roberts. I just have a very short, have a question to ask. Would you be running independent or would you be forming our next party for the next election? I just want to ask this question.
Who asked me that question? Why? Well, for me to answer that question, you have to commit to free sound. I want to take it one day at a time. There is no need to rush. I have to consult with my constituency, I mean, my soldiers. We have not yet gone to that level, but I'll be there. I'll be running, but I cannot tell you exactly how yet, because, as I said today to someone, politics is full of dynamics. You're here today, you're not here tomorrow. So let's wait and see.
Thank you very much. Any more questions or comments? Yes?
Mr. Chairman, I want to just ask anyone at the head table, including our Parliamentary Rep. What, because I am fighting to clarify in my mind, as a Southerner, what is the cause of the dissension? What is the true cause of the dissension when the NDC, which I have supported all my political life, I would like to find out in a short, precise sentence or sentences, what is the cause? Because I am saying this because it would help me to decide how to move. Thank you.
Dissension between who? I didn't hear clearly.
There is dissension in the party.
Right, okay.
Okay, and I'm trying to find out what, in a very precise way, is the cause.
And if you will permit me to answer that one, as a member of the head table, I will say to you that a fundamental difference has been a difference with regards to policies. I believe that within the NDC, there are some persons who would like to embark on a more aggressive economic and foreign policy initiatives, persons who would have seen and appreciate that while the economy and world economic conditions were bad, that we could have done more. And while there are persons who, I believe, lack creativity, lack initiative, and at the same time, were so conservative in the outlook, frustrated the entire process. I think it's a fundamental difference in policy outlook. Do you have any more questions, comments? We want to wrap up by 9 o'clock?
Good night to everyone at the table. As you know, I'm from St. Patrick's.
Welcome to the south.
And I think it would be remiss of me if I come here and don't show my appreciation to Miss Glennis Roberts. As a NDC person, it hurts me. For the number of years, you know, before I made the point, before I made the point, let me say this. I don't think some of the comments that are made is being made by persons who are born of a mother. You may find that song foolish, but I have a mother. She, well, I had a mother. She passed. And I cannot understand. We had one single MP, as a woman, NDC woman, sitting in the parliament. And I was ashamed. I feel hurt as a member of the NDC to have read, and I stop reading now, the amount of comments that was made by this lady, made about this lady. And you finally reach a stage where you have said, enough is enough. I want to congratulate you. And I see you here tonight. You speak so humble. In all of the adversities that have been coming to you, you seem so steadfast. You seem so focused. I want to congratulate you. I want to ask you, I want to also ask you to continue to hold your head high, because people are looking at you. They may not say things to you, but they are looking at the way you display yourself. So continue doing what you're doing. And once again, congratulations for the time you stayed first, holding that ship together. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Allow me to now thank you so much for coming out. As I said, tonight has been a celebration of the contribution thus far of the Margaret Tatcher of Grenada politics, the Eugenia Charles of Grenada politics, our old iron lady, the Honorable Glennis Roberts, the queen, the queen of the south, sisters and brothers. And we like to end the way we began, and allow me to call on Comrade Valdemar Paul, Assistant General Secretary, still is of the National Democratic Congress. Valdemar, come and close us with a word of prayer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's all pray. Gracious and loving Father who art in heaven, at this time, oh Lord, we want to pause to say thanks to you for a day well spent, Father. Even at this moment, we recognize that you, God, led us this evening. And Father, we are so grateful that you have allowed us this opportunity where we can once again bring hope to our people, even in this sparring time. Father, we know and recognize that the situation that is ahead of us is turbulent, but we know that you have calmed the troubles here. So we know that you are able, Father. We have the trust and confidence in you that you are going to guide us. Father, we ask that you'll continue to be with us, Sister Glennis. Give her the strength, Father, as she continues to motivate our people, because this evening, even in our presentation, her motivation inspires us to continue struggling to build this beloved country. Father, we ask as we leave this place to go to our several homes, that you'd be with us, give us traveling mercies, and bring us together again, and we'll continue to bring this message of hope for our country. We ask in Jesus's precious name.
Amen. Thank you very much, comrade. Get home safely. Thank you once again for coming out. Have a lovely good night. Thank you especially, members of the press. You guys, please, get home safely. Have a good one.